And you're recording and you're streaming, so whenever you're ready.
Okay, and it is seven o'clock, so might as well get this meeting opened up. This is a meeting, a work session of the town council on Monday, December 14th at seven o'clock. Rob?
All right, so we can go through the agenda, but I also want to spend some time this evening talking about scheduling some of the meetings that we need to make sure get on the council's agenda. So I guess the easiest way to deal with the agenda we have for tonight is to simply ask, are there any questions? Are there any items on there that anyone would like background on that wasn't provided in memos?
So I just have one question, Rob, and that's 12B, item 12B, which is the dump truck?
Yes.
So the amount stated, the 160 in the resolution, 160,000 some, doesn't match the grid in the memo.
And let me just pull up the...
Okay. So when you look at the memo regarding the purchase, the company that we're to award the bid to, Coastal International Trucks, that bid amount doesn't match.
It's 161,395, actually.
Right.
Yeah.
But the resolution says 160, 838.
Okay, I don't know why John made the difference. It's a small, the thousand dollars may be...
But that 16838 matches the one at the top of the grid, that Tri-State, I don't have it in front of me at the moment.
Okay, I just brought John Shark in if you want to have him explain that.
It looks like a clerical error to me, but we need to fix that, I think, before we vote, right?
I think you're correct. I think we're going to go to the lower right-hand corner, but John? Have we got John yet?
Rob, I'm looking up right, let me look up the bid results on the S drive. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
An error there. Hold on, bear with me just a second, I apologize.
Meanwhile, any other questions? We can multitask tonight.
I do have a question.
Sure.
One really simple question is, how does one ask a question? Do we raise our hand? Do we just unmute ourselves? Just a fundamental process question.
So during the work session, we're pretty informal. We don't normally follow strict parliamentary procedures. But as far as during the meeting, obviously, you're going to follow the council rules and Robert's rules of orders, order if the council rules don't abide. So it's typically the chair recognizes anyone seeking to be recognized. And if for any reason someone is being ignored by the chair, you can always make an appeal to the body. That's the standard parliamentary procedure. During the work sessions, we just sort of, it's a discussion. So however you need to.
So are we unmuting ourselves or am I using the raised hand in Zoom?
During the work session?
During the regular meeting.
That'll be a decision that the council has to make for itself going forward. I can't tell you.
Okay.
Decide that tonight when you go into your regular session, I think.
Okay, and then...
Especially now, I'm happy to mute myself and let you have that conversation.
I don't know. I do have another question then.
Okay.
So about the resolution regarding the continuation of the emergency order with executive powers given over to you. Can you tell me, I'm just curious, what are the pros and cons of continuing that or not? Because how does that benefit, like how does having that benefit the town?
So there's two different things tonight. There is the executive order dealing with gatherings, and that's a mirror on the governor's executive order regarding gatherings. And there's also the declaration of emergency. The declaration of emergency is the authority to act quickly, should the administration have to act quickly. We've also talked about that in recent meetings as being important because it may be tied to reimbursement for federal aid and even state aid going forward. We've been advised in conversations with the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency not to walk away from emergency declarations too quickly because funding may be tied to those. Apparently, in the past, the federal government has said those municipalities that had an executive, had an emergency declaration are reimbursed, those that did not are not. So there is some relevance to the possibility of funding. I'm going to share my screen though, because I think it's important for folks to understand that, host is going to have to enable me to share my screen. It's important for folks to know that the executive orders, which we've taken, the actions we've taken under the emergency declaration, don't last forever. And in fact, we only have one emergent executive order, one emergency order outstanding right now, and that's the travel, the gatherings and travel one that we're going to renew tonight if the council sees fit to do so. All of the others, things like no gathering for hurricane parties, the gathering of students for parties off of URI campus, all of those had time periods that have lapsed, and we have not renewed because it wasn't necessary to renew them. So we're not, you know, we're not just amassing power on the administrative side of the House here, where we need to take an action. We are taking the action. We are now bringing those to the council for ratification, which is why you're seeing that executive order here tonight, because it needs to be renewed. And where we don't need it, where the value is no longer there, we're letting them lapse. So really, at this point, the only thing that we've got on the books is the emergency declaration, which allows us to take action if necessary. And if the council renews it tonight, an executive order that mirrors the governor's executive order with regard to the limits on gatherings.
Rob, it's Colleen. You should be able to share.
Thank you.
Okay.
I see your hand down, so. That's not the one I wanted to share. So this is a list of the executive orders that we have dealt with. And these are the dates on which those have all expired. So I'll get this list out to the council so you know what they are, but parking restrictions are no longer in place. Retail and grocery store limits, the plastic bag relief executive order, all of those have fallen by the wayside as they are no longer necessary. The plastic bag is a good example. When we put this in place, we had been told by a number of local retailers that they couldn't get their hands on plastic bags because of disruption in the supply chain. That issue was resolved during the summer and really is not a problem now. We are now going to start reaching back out to businesses and remind them that there is a plastic bag ordinance in South Kingstown, and we are going to begin enforcing it at the beginning of the year. Okay, and does that answer your question, Deb? Yes.
So are other towns still doing this? Is Charlestown? I'm just trying to figure out where we are compared to other towns with the continuing.
I don't know of any town in Rhode Island that has ceased its emergency declaration. Mike, you may, you deal with these.
I was just going to jump in, Deb. No, I'm pretty up to date with what's going on everywhere, certainly with the other towns I represent. And each and every one of them is continuing with their own executive order. I think for the reasons that Rob has mentioned in terms of quick, fast reaction, potential reimbursement for expenses later, et cetera, it's just, it seems to be prudent to keep them in place.
Thank you both.
John, the truck, what's it look like?
Yes, so the table in the memo on page two is correct. The amount in the resolution is incorrect. I apologize for that. It should be 161,395.
So we can just take care of that with an amendment at that time, correct? To that resolution?
I would case unless Mike feels otherwise, but yes, the amount in the resolution is incorrect. Again, I apologize for that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on the agenda?
I have just a clarifying question. I'm assuming that because Deb and I were not in the work session on 11/23, that we should abstain from voting to approve those minutes? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I want to now move to the scheduling discussion. We've got a lot of things that we try to do at the beginning of a session. I'm going to share my screen again, if I can find that button. All right. So first of all, I want to note that our initial budget hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday at seven o'clock. This will be a joint session with the school committee, and it is a public hearing. The purpose of this first budget hearing is to hear from the public about sort of contextual issues, if you will. We will describe some of the broad economic drivers impacting South Kingstown, impacting Rhode Island, impacting the nation, very broad overview of what the context is within which we will be laying out a budget for the schools and for the town over the course of the next several months. It is a public hearing. The public will be able to give comments and provide input into what they're experiencing and what their hopes and aspirations are for the budget in the coming year. We will also begin the conversation about goals and objectives, particularly the goals and objectives around the council goals related to education. So communication with the school department and education just generally. That's just, that's happening, and it'll be this Wednesday. Yes, Deb?
Since we're new, I just was going to ask, are there any documents that we should have ahead of time to prepare for this so that we're not, you know?
I, well, no, there's no required documents here. There's nothing, there's no prepared documents. In fact, our charter is very clear that this isn't the prepared budget. This is supposed to just be a conversation about the issues. Well, it's more than that. It's a public hearing about the issues that will affect the budget season, that will affect our choices over the course of the next several months. So there are no documents. There are, of course, prior years' documents. You could always go online and look at this year's budget. You can go online and look at prior year presentations. One of the things that might be helpful is to just get a sense, spend some time thinking about and maybe Googling things like the inflation rate, although we will give you the year-over-year inflation rate at this meeting. That's one of the reasons, you know, we have it is so that we can give those global indicators of the well-being of the economy or the state of the economy. But just having a sense of what's going on, what the unemployment rate is, again, we'll give it to you. But if you have questions about unemployment, if you have questions about the economic theory that is sort of driving state policy, any of those questions are appropriate at this meeting. If they're too detailed, we may have to give back to you with an answer, but we're happy to have that conversation. But no, there's no, there's no document to have been reviewed. This is a prior to the document being produced meeting.
Right, but is there, is the school providing like a pro forma?
So I've spoken to the schools about this, in fact, today. You know, one of the practices in the past has been to use a pro forma. The charter doesn't require a pro forma, and in fact, the language in the charter for this initial budget hearing suggests that it not be a pro forma. The charter, actually, in my reading of it, suggests that this is really before you'd even get to a pro forma. And there's some dangers with having the school present a pro forma. A pro forma budget is literally anticipated revenues and anticipated expenses. The problem with that is you're assuming expenses before you've ever had any conversation about what you should be expending. So I've encouraged them not to present a pro forma at Wednesday night's meeting. I've asked them to produce their revenue projections, what they think they're going to have to spend, but I don't want them to tell us what they think they're going to spend because that's the conversation. That's what budgeting is about. It's about deciding what they should spend going forward. I don't want them to come in and say, our anticipated expenses are 3% above what last year's were. That becomes an anchor in economic psychology terms, and I don't want to anchor on a particular number. I want to have a conversation about what they should be spending. So I don't anticipate, although it's still two days away, I don't anticipate a pro forma from the schools, not a budget. We will have their revenue projections. And they will be able to describe, you know, their contract obligations, you know, many of the expenses that they've had this year. They just won't put that down to a budget. Other questions on Wednesday night? Okay. One of the things that I do want to get on the calendar soon is an orientation with the town solicitor on sort of the law of lawmaking, the Open Meetings Act, the ethics rules, fiduciary responsibility as public officials, those sorts of rules really need to be gone over. And Mike has offered up the dates you see on the screen here, the 29th of December, the 30th of December, the 11th of January, if we do it at 5:30 or 6 o'clock before the town council meeting, or the 12th of January. So any thoughts on what might work for getting together for a orientation on the rules of lawmaking?
Rob, it's Mike. I just want to add in that I'm assuming seven o'clock works best for everyone. So other than on the 11th, before the council meeting, these would be at seven.
Rob, I like the 11th prior to the town council meeting. That would be my preference.
I have no preference.
I would prefer something at seven o'clock, but I mean, I can, if 5:30 before the meeting works for everybody else, like I'd definitely make that happen.
Jessica, we could do six. We can do this in an hour. So I would say six o'clock, six to seven.
All right, going once, going twice, the 11th at six o'clock. I did want to remind folks that the Hassanfeld Institute, which is also going to cover much of this and a lot more over two-day seminar, has sent out invites to folks. I hope you've all had a chance to review their agenda, and I hope you can sign up because it really is, it's a wonderful training. So I just wanted to remind you that that offer is still out there from the institute, and it is well worth doing. Then the next thing that we've got to do is we've got to have a meeting, a work session, to talk about goals and objectives. The goals and objectives for the next two years play very much into our budget process. We budget to achieve the things that the town council has set out as the things it wants to achieve. So we need to really have this conversation. It's been a while since the goals and objectives have had a good, solid review by the town council. So it's time, it's overdue, and we probably are going to need two to three hours to do this, to do this well. So thoughts and preferences with regard to goals and objectives?
Are you looking to schedule an evening meeting for this as well? Is that what the?
We will work with the council. If you'd rather do it during the day, we're happy to do that as well.
Saturday, I think during the day might be a little bit of a stretch for some folks here. But a Saturday morning or is that a, you know, that's, I think, would be another viable solution for people that...
I actually like the idea of a Saturday in terms of just not having this be too hurried and crazy. I think that could be a really nice solution, Deb.
I like that too, because I don't know, I think sometimes in the morning you have different perspectives on things. As the day goes on, you know, you get tired, you know. I don't know, I think you do. I think you have a different take on the world at 9:00 AM than you do at 7:00 PM.
I think Saturday is a great, a great time to do that.
Okay. Let's see what we've got then.
Can we do it in January, Rob?
Yes, we can. It does feed the budget, but the budget, the budget is due March 1st to you. Yeah, January is fine. January is fine. Let's try. How does January? January 9th? January 9th?
That works for me.
It works.
Okay, and what time do we want to start?
10:00 AM?
Okay. Any alternatives to 10:00 AM?
It's fine with me.
January 9th at 10:00 AM. Very good. We can actually handle the rules of conduct, I think, at the same time if there are any changes. The council will have to adopt those formally, and you can do that at any time. I mean, that really is your call, but if you want to handle them at the same time on that same Saturday, we can go through and make any changes that you'd like to make that morning, and then you can adopt them at a regular meeting, at the next regular meeting, I suppose. The alternative is to leave them alone, not deal with them as part of that Saturday meeting, and just have the council, you know, bring them up during a regular session and hash them out if there's anything to be hashed out during that regular session. They've been around for a while. They're solid rules. There's nothing about that rule set that makes me, you know, uncomfortable. There's nothing in them that is all that amendment-worthy, I would think. But, you know, that's your call. They are your rules.
I'd prefer to review them on the Saturday morning and then take, if there's any changes, we can take them to the next meeting, well, it'll be the meeting post the 11th, right? So.
Yep, okay.
That's my thought, so.
Okay. We do need to get a state legislator meeting on the agenda. We haven't spoken to our state legislators in a meeting in a while. Any thoughts or preferences about when we do this?
What time of year did we do that last year?
Boy, you know, I don't remember, Rory. Susan or Colleen, do you guys remember? I just, I don't recall.
I don't. Let me see if I can look it up, though, while you're talking about other things.
It seems to me, Rory, it was in the spring, though. It wasn't this spring. I think it was the spring of 19, actually. I think it was spring of 19.
Yeah, I think that's right, Rob, because this past spring just got, you know, very crazy when COVID happened. I think we missed our opportunity. So I don't, I don't know, this year, of course, there's going to be a leadership change up there. So we probably want to give them a little time to get settled into their routine and then have the meeting.
Yeah, it looks like it was December of 2019.
Okay. Wow. Totally off my...
And we can, if you want, we can send the minutes to the council from that meeting, so you'll see what you talked about last time. I mean, they posted the website, but we can send those too.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. That's good.
Thank you.
So we could wait until February, or we could wait until... Yeah. They really, it is crazy up there right now. We're not going to get them by the end of this month, I think. But we can get an invite out for January or February.
I'd be more inclined to push it out further, February anyway, if not March. I think we, as a council, need to decide what we, you know, our goals and objectives, what we need from the general assembly before we can, we bring them in and ask them, you know, how's it going, or this is what we'd like to see, or I think we, as a council, need to settle that first. And then, so I'm looking at February, maybe March, before we have a sit-down.
I agree with that, Rob.
All right, we'll send an invite with a mid-February to mid-March range, and we'll coordinate schedules with the, with the delegation then. Great. Town and gown? I don't remember when we had this one either. Susan, do you recall?
We had a town and gown meeting last year on January 30th at the very end of the month. We had not had one in a few years prior to that.
When is the president of the university, when is his tenure over?
July 1st.
So do we want to have it with Dr. Dooley still in place, or do we want to wait and have it with the new president?
I almost would suggest both, but I think there is some merit to having a meeting as soon as possible with a new university president, but he's going to be, or she's going to be very busy, so. I wouldn't hold off until July, I think. I think it makes sense for, we have quite a bit of stuff that's going on with the university. It might make sense for us to do this. This is probably a March-April meeting in my mind.
That's fine with me.
And if you remember, that meeting was actually hosted at the university. So whether we want to do it, although it's Zoom now, I guess, so perhaps that's a move.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask them, you know, if they think it's good to go up to the campus in March-April. I'm happy to do that, but we'll do it by Zoom if we're still doing COVID safety.
Yeah, July, we might be able to do it in person. Probably March, I would think, would be Zoom.
That's probably right. Yeah.
I think, you know, we can do both, like you suggested, Rob, maybe have one March and then one later on in the year, too.
Yeah, if we do a March Zoom, it's not a heavy, heavy lift. I mean, they did, they worked hard to organize that meeting for us last year. There was a lot of logistics. If we do it by Zoom, maybe we cut down on some of that, and then we can ask them for August, September in person. All right. We do need to put a joint work session on the council's agenda with regard to the planning board, the Economic Development Committee, the Affordable Housing Coalition. And I've put the Conservation Commission in there. There's a lot of activity in these areas, and it's been a while since we met with the planning board. And the Economic Development Committee is constantly sort of looking for guidance from the council. I do think that this is a meeting that is overdue as well, and I'd like to get the council's sense of when we might do a joint meeting, whether a joint meeting with everybody makes some sense, if I can orchestrate it so that we've got one presenter by each body, and then a conversation around the topics that have been raised by each of them. I think you could do it in Zoom as a big multi-committee meeting if we make sure that everybody knows that they're coming, somebody's coming with the committee's presentation or requests, and then the conversation runs around or goes around those three or four topics. But you can also break them up. These are the folks who, with the, again, the Conservation Commission has got a lot of... But you can also break them up. Um, these are the folks who, uh, with the, the, again, the Conservation Commission has got a lot of interesting things going on, um, and I think that there is something to be said if they're in a larger conversation, uh, with the other, uh, three committees. Um, we could do all four of them separately, uh, but I do think that it's time for a meeting with these guys.
Rob, I just want to point out that it is seven thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel like we should have that larger meeting sooner rather than later. That's just, I'd rather do it in January, February, rather than push it farther out.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I have to say, I agree with that, just to catch up to speed on whatever, you know, we haven't, yeah, that would, I, I would appreciate that.
Okay, and the last thing is, we're going to get everybody on the agenda again, starting to be on regular council meetings. We had started a cycle, and then COVID blew us up on getting every Boarding Commission regularly before the council, we will do that again.
Susan, back to you. Seven thirty. I am going to call this meeting of the Town Council to order. It is Monday, December fourteenth at seven thirty PM. I'm going to begin by asking you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am now going to take the roll call. You each, going to please respond when your name is called, and I'm going to go alphabetically. Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilwoman McEntee.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yeah.
Okay. All members being present, uh, the first item of business this evening is going to be nominations for the president of the Town Council. There will be no debate on nominations. I would suggest that you each unmute yourselves, and it might be easier for me if you would physically raise your hand before you speak, so that I can acknowledge you when I open the floor. So, Jess, you're not, you're still muted.
I.
There you go, okay. Do I hear any nominations for president of the Town Council? Mrs. Bergner, you have your hand up first.
Thank you. Um, tonight, I would like to nominate Rory McEntee for Town Council President. Um, even though I was the highest vote getter, I'm new and I'm still learning, and so with Rory McEntee being the second highest vote getter, and having served on the council before, I nominate him as Town Council President.
Thank you. Do I hear any other nominations for president of the Town Council?
Uh, Susan, can I speak on this quick?
Um, Michael, I'm.
Excuse me, I think we need to get all the nominations in for us, then close nominations, and then we can go on.
All right, Mike, well, I'd like to make a nomination, but I'd just like to speak prior to, can I do that?
You can, you can speak with the nomination.
Okay, great. Uh, Deb, I appreciate that nomination, and I thank you for that. Uh, with my full-time schedule, as, as, you know, I would like to be president, however, with my busy schedule as a full-time law student, I believe, uh, I'm a better fit to be vice president. Um, with the pandemic ongoing, uh, the effort on the Town Council is, is a lot, requires a lot of effort on the part of all of us to get the job done. Uh, for purposes of continuity to the service of the people of South Kingstown, I will be nominating Abel Collins for president.
Thank you, Rory. Do I hear any other nominations for president? Seeing none, the nominations are declared closed. We're now going to vote on the nominations before us until we have a majority of the newly-elected Town Council members voting in the affirmative for the nomination before them. All those in favor of Rory McEntee being president of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown until November twenty twenty-two, or until legally discharged therefrom, signify by saying aye. All opposed will signify by saying nay, and I'm going to take a roll call vote on the nomination before us. So again, I will go alphabetically. Councilwoman Bergner.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Nay.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Nay.
Councilman McEntee.
Nay.
Councilwoman Rose.
Nay.
Okay, that nomination has failed. We will now vote on the nomination of Abel Collins as council president. Councilwoman Bergner.
Nay.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose.
Aye.
Okay, Abel Collins is elected president of the Town Council for the term until November of twenty twenty-two. And Abel, I am now handing the gavel over to you, and it will be your next order of business to call for nominations for vice president.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, yes, so item four B is the nomination and election of vice president. Do I hear any nominations?
So I'd like to nominate Rory McEntee to be vice president of the council.
All right, uh, do I hear a second, or do I need to call for multiple nominations?
Yeah. Yeah. So Abel, technically, there's no need for a second, but you should call to see if anyone else wants to nominate anyone.
Any other nominations for vice president?
I'm, I'm just gonna say that there are three women who represent the council, and just was hoping that maybe perhaps there would be consideration for one, for women in leadership. You know, it's one of the democratic values about representation, and I just wanted to put that out there in case there was Jess or Deb that would consider being vice president. And I think, you know, it's the hundredth year of the suffragette movement, so it would be remiss not to acknowledge that we are the majority, and that, that would be considered for leadership. So just wanted to put it out there. It's not a motion, just a look around.
Good point. All right, uh, I see no other nominations at this point, uh, however, uh, so let us have a roll call vote on the nomination.
Just officially able to close nominations, please?
All right, seeing no other nominations, I'll close, uh, four B. And now can we have a roll call vote on the nomination of, uh, Councilman Mc?
Councilwoman Bergner.
Aye.
Thank you. Council President Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose.
Aye.
The nomination is complete, and Rory McEntee is elected vice president of the council for the ensuing term of two years until November twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Very good. Um, so, uh, we'll continue with the agenda. I did want to just, uh, remark first on the fact that we have two, uh, Debs on the council now, and, um, I was curious just how you would like to be addressed, uh.
Well, your highness is fine with me, but, um, uh, you know, if you don't go with that, I think Councilwoman Kelso and Councilwoman Bergner would, will, um, satisfy the confusion.
All right, I will, uh, change my habit of speaking and will be, uh, using Councilwoman and Councilman, uh, henceforward, and unless we decide to do it differently. Uh, all right, so that brings us to.
I thought you were asking about my preferred name, my, even though it comes up, Deborah, I go by Deb. I, it's fine, Councilwoman, however, but you can just call me Deb, and even though it comes up preferred that way, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Um, all right, uh, item five on the agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, uh, to approve items five A and B, of course, uh, a couple of us were not here for those, uh, meetings. Um, so I, Susan, they'll be abstaining from this vote. Um, I guess we'll take it, uh, as a roll call on this one as well.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Abstain.
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Rose.
Hello, abstain.
Thank you.
Good, and that brings us to item six, which is the consent agenda.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, Deb, Deb Kelso, second.
Right, we have a motion by Councilman McEntee, second by Councilwoman Kelso. Uh, any discussion? Is there anyone opposed to this motion? That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to item six on the agenda, licenses. Six A is a resolution granting a victualling and holiday sales license, uh, to Wakefield Nutrition, doing business as Wakefield Nutrition of Main Street in Wakefield, application by Samantha Elliott.
So just a point of order, that we have two item sixes, so.
Ah, that is true, this is now item seven.
So we're licensed.
Good catch. Uh, so seven is what it should be. Seven A is, uh, this victualling license is Samantha Elliott or somebody here to speak on this? Um, if you are in the audience, uh, and you're here to speak on this license item, uh, please click the icon to raise your hand, or if you're on your phone and you're listening, uh, please hit star nine, and that will raise your hand, and we will recognize you.
Abel, I don't see Samantha's name in the list, and no one is raising their hand to speak on her behalf. We have been unable to reach her. We've had no response to letters and emails and phone calls that we've sent.
Is, is the business in good standing?
It's a new business, so, and she still has a few things to get in order before she can open, and one of them obviously is this license, but.
Well, uh, I suppose a, a motion to continue to the next meeting would be in order at this point.
Right, so I'll make a motion that we table, uh, seven A until the next meeting.
Second.
A motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second by Councilman McEntee. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to seven B, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Angry Unicorn Half Marathon Five K Road Race on Sunday, October tenth, twenty twenty-one, to Ocean State Multi-Sport of East Providence, subject to the execution of an old harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance, naming the town as an additional insured, uh, for the event and the amounts specified by the finance director. Proceeds to benefit the South Kingstown Senior Center and YMCA, application by Gary Meneesian. Is Gary here on? So again, if you are here, uh, to represent, uh, this license application, please raise your hand at this point, using the little, uh, hand-shaped icon. Or if you're on your phone, hit star nine, and that will raise your hand. We are striking out tonight.
So I'll make the motion that we table seven B, uh, until the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second by Councilman McEntee. Is there any discussion? Or anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us to item eight, oh, this is, yes, it is item eight. Item eight F, an email dated December first, twenty twenty, from Conrad Furlough, Jeremy Marcantonio, and Nate Merrill, presenting a proposal for expansion of public parking along the southern terminus of Green Hill Beach Road. Uh, we've had an opportunity to review, uh, those materials personally, but I'm sure somebody is here to speak on this one. If you would like to speak to item eight F, uh, please raise your hand now, or hit star nine if you're on your phone. Maybe we just surprised everybody with this meeting. All right, uh, seeing, uh, nobody is here to speak on this, uh, communication. Is there any discussion from the council?
This is, uh, Mike Curcillo, do you want to refer that to my office? Because we've been working on putting together options for you. So this is Deb Kelso, I'll make the motion that we refer to the solicitor's office.
Rory McEntee, I'll second that motion.
Right, we have a motion from Councilwoman McEntee, uh, second from Councilman McEntee. Um, is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Very good, that motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us very quickly to item nine on the agenda, comments from interested citizens. Uh, if there's anyone who would like to speak at this time, uh, you can use that little icon that I've been talking about, uh, or you can hit star nine if you're on your phone, and we'll recognize people in the order in which they raise their hand. All right. I am not seeing any, uh, raised hands. Are there comments from council members this evening? All right, well, I, I'll say that, um, I, I appreciate, uh, the support of their council members in reappointing me as president, and will do my best to continue to hold open and transparent meetings, and have productive discussions, and, uh, you know, serve the town as well as I can. I would like to also recognize, uh, the leadership of the town that has been ongoing and fighting the COVID crisis. I mean, we've seen terrible reports of how Rhode Island is doing the worst in the whole world in terms of case percentages. Um, but if you look even more granular at the data, South Kingstown has been one of the few bright spots, and I think a lot of credit, of course, goes to our citizens, our residents, but also, um, Rob, I think you've done a great job leading on behalf of the town, and the schools have done a great job on their behalf as well. So thank you for that. All right, and that brings us to, uh, the Town Manager Report. End of time.
Great, um, first of all, let me, um, say thank you. We, we do appreciate the, um, the recognition. Everyone in Town Hall is working hard, but I think your point about the citizenry in, in South Kingstown, uh, is exactly right. Uh, the people here in South Kingstown have, um, taken. The people here in South Kingstown have taken their own health and the health of their neighbors to heart, and that's made all of the difference. It's just been tremendous. They've tolerated changes in the way Town Hall operates, which isn't always the case. We've seen elsewhere in Rhode Island and around the country where changes happen. Frustrations have caused strife and conflict, and we have not had that here. People have been really good about accommodating the changes we've had to make in the way we operate. And I deeply appreciate that about the folks here in South Kingstown who have just been wonderful. With that, I'm going to switch over, I'm going to share my screen and we'll go to the flag report for this week. The current pause, which has been extended now and has gone beyond December 13th, we are having a challenge in the rec department with the guild employees. Our part-time staff over there are really customer facing. This is one of those places where we may again find ourselves asking the public to to be patient as we have to adjust how we deliver services at the guild and in the rec center. It's, we've tried to keep everybody working. We've tried to keep all of our part-time and full-time staff fully engaged. We've had great success with our full-time employees. It's been more difficult for part-time staff who really can't be kept busy doing training or doing some of the work that, you know, involves just knowing the programs better than a part-time staff might. So for example, at the senior center, we've been able to have our employees spend time instead of being with the program participants online reviewing their web pages, changing the narratives on the web and that sort of thing. But that requires an understanding of the programs that isn't necessarily there with our part-time staff. So we are beginning to bump into a challenge with regard to the workload and keeping folks working part-time at the rec center and the guild. We have had changes in the senior center. Classes at the senior center are postponed until January 11th at this point. Weekly wellness checks have also been postponed until the 13th. With the extension of the pause, I've not spoken to Sue Demasi, but I imagine she's now going to push that off until after the 20th of December as well. Meal pickup and delivery is still happening and a meal will in fact be delivered Wednesday for program participants for Christmas. So that program has been sustained and will be able to be sustained through the holiday season and beyond that. That program is just, it's running incredibly well and the participation in that program has been extraordinary. In terms of minor concerns, we have had our discussion with Kevin Finnegan about the Mattoonik Beach Seawall public-private partnership attempt that has not gone as quickly as we had hoped. We are continuing those discussions, but I'm not as optimistic as I was when last we met. I think we may find ourselves pursuing an approach that is more public and less private in its solution. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, jinx it and I don't want to presume that that's where we are. But if I had to gauge where we are right now, I think we're aiming more toward or we have to be prepared more for a wholly public solution to that problem at the beach, at the Mattoonik Beach Road Seawall. State budget is underway. We have seen some preliminary numbers from the state on this and they're pretty good. We're not looking at drastic reductions and we do see some COVID monies. The amount of COVID funds that we're slated to receive is not dramatic. It will be somewhere between 120 and just shy of $200,000. But any, anything we can get in these difficult times is appreciated. And, you know, our expenditures are below what the state reimbursement would be at this point if we don't consider the South Road School COVID testing site and the costs of maintaining the heat and electricity in that building for the next several months. But once we start adding that in, we're gonna break even. We're not going to see, we're not going to see surplus state funds from the COVID reimbursement portion of the budget. And we're not going to see surplus state funds in any account at this point. We will see some deficiencies or some deficits from what we anticipated at the beginning of the year, but nothing, nothing very dramatic. The South Road School is open for testing and it's apparently operating very, very efficiently. I have not been over to be tested, but I've spoken to several town employees and residents who have been over. It apparently is working very well. And the state has contacted us and said that they also do want to start planning around that site being used as a vaccine distribution point as well. So we should start seeing as the vaccine begins to roll out and is available for first responders in particular. We should see that site being utilized for the purpose of vaccinating people. We do have an officer graduating from the academy today, graduated today. I see Deb Kelso's hand, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bergner's hand. Question on South Road?
Thanks Bob. So can we just before go back to South Road? So you were in the middle, right around the election time or right after about negotiating the lease agreement? Do you have any details on that? Because we won't, I thought the original agreement was just for a month and you were going to work on a longer one. So since we won't meet until January, do you have any update?
So we have a lease license. And Mike, actually you can speak to this better than I can at this moment.
Yeah, it's actually, we actually have a license right now in place, not a lease. And the license agreement anticipated rolling over into a lease once we had the information from the state as to how long. I mean, I can't imagine them not needing it for right into the summer, so.
So, but Councilwoman Bergner, the council resolution superseded the executive order to get them in. The executive order was designed to get them in on a Saturday, like two days before they needed to be in there. The executive, I'm sorry, the resolution authorized a license or lease agreement. A license agreement is in place. I don't anticipate the state offering up a lease fee. I'm not anticipating that we're going to be generating rents from this location. I anticipate that we will find that the state wants to continue under their license and will essentially say, if you want us out, just tell us and we're gone. So we can remove them with 30 days' notice under the license agreement. But that's not what we think we ought to be doing at this point. And I don't anticipate them offering up a rental fee for the site either. So I think we're sort of at a place where we're going to have a license probably through March or April.
And I will confirm, Rob, that the license agreement approved by the council did not have an ending date. However, either party can terminate on 30 days' notice.
Right, so if the council wants us to sort of play hardball, we can tell them that we want them out in 30 days unless they come up with money. But that's really going to be our option. That's going to be the way that has to play out.
So my question would be, so we will be trying to recoup through federal money for the costs for the utilities for offering that as a center? Is that what you're saying?
We will certainly put in for federal reimbursement for the operating cost for the center. That's correct. But beyond that, the state's reimbursement that is being contemplated in the budget would also cover the expenses we've incurred plus these, plus the electricity and heat. By the way, they're operating the building right now with the doors open and the heat off or have been up to this point. So we may see that continue for a little while longer, although it's going to get colder this week. So eventually, we're going to have to turn it on. We do have two boilers in that building. We're using the smaller of the two. We don't need to heat the entire building, just that wing that they're in. So it's, you know, it's potentially still fairly expensive. I mean, the lights and the heat, we've estimated $3,000 a month. This is not, it's not free for us to operate this, this site. But the benefit to the community is clear and the state just, they're not, they're not providing municipalities with COVID funds other than what's being contemplated in the budget. And again, we'll cover our costs if that's all we see. We have recommended to the council that we begin negotiations. The Director of the Senior Services Program and Terry Murphy have put an RFP out. We've received two responses to that request for proposals and we're going to begin negotiations with both of those offerors. So hopefully, we will be able to come to the council with a proposal that would get adult daycare back up and running as a private sector enterprise in the real estate held by the town of South Kingstown. This was the model we had discussed when we suspended operations of the public service back in June of 2020. The council will remember that in June of 2020, we shut down the operation because we had really no way to sustain it since we couldn't bring participants into the program, couldn't bring participants into the building. So we had staff literally with nothing to do. For a while, we were able to keep them working elsewhere in town government, but we eventually ran into a problem with just not having enough work for folks who are medically trained and medically focused. So that program was suspended and we looked, or we described at the time, an interest in looking for a private sector provider. Again, two have been identified through a request for proposals and we will begin negotiations with them over the next couple of weeks. Smartphone application, smartphone tool for letting the public contact the town and get notices, news notifications and this sort of thing is now under development. We hope to have the smartphone app up and running in the next week or two. So that's coming to a phone near you soon. And then Shepherd's Run, just a note for the council. The property closed the day after the, well, two days after the property closed. The property owner was out at the property and our building inspector met with him. Their plan at this point is to begin rehabbing all of the buildings that exist. They're not going to be breaking ground on new buildings, but they're going to start soft, I suppose, by going in and renovating the buildings that are already on the ground, that they don't need any special planning permission for. They can simply work with building permits. So they're pulling rehab building permits now and will be, and are working on the property renovation and restoration of the existing buildings as we speak. The plan then is to move to sort of phase one B, I suppose, and begin getting the permissions for the new structures that will have to be built out there. And that is my manager's report with one other caveat and one note. Coming back to the state budget and its relationship to our budget, I will note that the state is also contemplating a budget, well, not budget, planning a bond referendum for March. They're now contemplating putting a bond referendum out in March. And this does have some implications for our scheduling of a school facilities bond in the spring of next year as well. And one of the things that will come up, I'm sure during our preliminary or initial budget hearing discussion on Wednesday is whether it is appropriate and necessary even to accelerate our schedule for a school facilities bond to coincide with the March bond that the state was going to, is going to be putting out. If they're going to do a bond on March 2nd, it makes little sense for us to wait and do a bond, a local bond eight weeks later in May. And then with the potential of a budget referendum, we could be looking at a referendum in March, in May and in June, which is just a silly way to be dealing with operating the expenses around maintaining budgets. We don't know yet about what the voting procedures are going to be, whether they're all mail-in, whether we're going to have, you know, emergency voting the same way that we did this past cycle. But we really don't want to be in a situation where we have emergency voting for a bond in February and March, emergency voting for a bond in April and May, voting, mail-in voting for those two, and then a budget referendum on top of that. It would be another, you know, perennial persistent, non-stop voting spring and summer. And it would not necessarily be inexpensive and it would not necessarily be the best way for us to handle that set of issues. So that we will talk about on Wednesday. With that, I'm going to stop sharing and answer any questions anyone may have on the report.
Rob, I got a question and I don't know if you want to focus on this on Wednesday or not, but I'll ask it here. How soon would we need to seek enabling legislation from the state legislature to kind of move forward with this?
Nearly immediately, as soon as possible. The deadline is the 11th of January, I believe.
And that's our first meeting, date of our first meeting?
It's our first meeting. If on Wednesday, the council decides that it makes sense for us to be moving, then staff will be scheduling a special meeting because I have to move faster than, than our regular schedule.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's my report.
Can I just clarify? January 11th is actually the tentative deadline for the town to certify the local questions to the Secretary of State's office. That means we have to already have had a request to the legislatures with the enabling legislation. They have to pass it. You have to request the Secretary of State to put it on the March state bond referendum election and the local board of canvases would have to certify that question. And that all has to be done according to their tentative schedule right now by January 11th. So it's a very short timeframe.
So Rob, could that be put in front of us by the December 28th meeting, the next meeting?
We don't have a meeting on December 28th, but we could schedule a meeting for that. And yes, the language you'll, you'll recall for the facilities bond was drafted by bond council last year. We've spoken to bond council this last week and we can have that ready and it can be in the hands of the legislators, you know, tomorrow. It's, that's not an issue. So that can be done, yes. The question is again, essentially done. So yes, that can be done by the second week of, I'm sorry, the last week of December, we could have that.
So you don't need a vote from the majority of the council to seek enabling legislation to get this on the March 2nd ballot?
You do.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Absolutely, you need, that's why you would need a special meeting way before January 11th.
Yeah.
Got it.
So Rory, to answer your question, I will have everything to you guys Wednesday. I will deliver to you a packet with what would, what would need to be processed on Wednesday of this week because we've got it. There's nothing, there's nothing that we don't have to pull together. So we'll just compile it into one, one packet for you guys.
So can I just ask a question? Has, do you have any knowledge that the legislature is going to meet prior to January? I don't know, I guess it would be the 5th is, would be their standard day that they go into session, right? The day after. standard day that they go into session, right? The day after um, the first Monday, I think, whatever. Um, maybe the fourth, maybe they go in the fourth. That would only be a week.
Yep.
I can't, I think that's.
This is apparently something they're very eager to do. They'd like to get um,
Okay.
these things rolled in together because there's a benefit to doing it. I mean, it, it's less expensive for municipalities. Uh, voter turnout is better when you have more questions on the ballot. You know, they expect that they'll get more uh, folks at a, a uh, election this way. So um, I've been told that this is something they want to do. And we've been asked uh, by a member of our delegation to uh, push legislation if this is something the council wants to do as soon as possible.
Okay.
Materials as soon as possible.
All right, if they're uh, they know it must be coming at them from a lot of municipalities. A lot of municipalities must be, you know, facing the same. So, you know, it's in their hands, I guess, if they've made those noises.
And I think they're eager to, you know, take action now that they're sort of back in the swing of things.
I, I'd like to say something. Um, this, this, this seems awfully um, rushed. We won't have even seen, I, I haven't seen the final version of the stage two. We wouldn't have heard back from Ride if they're gonna accept it. We would, we have told the community repeatedly that it would be held in the spring. The, the optics um, seem kind of rushed and for the community's sake, I mean, we, we weren't talking about this two weeks ago. So um, in the middle of probably a huge surge in COVID in the next two weeks to a month, we're gonna be, we're gonna be running on the hamster wheel for something that we haven't fully vetted ourselves, nor has Ride. So I just wanna put it out there that it gives me pause that we're, we're moving forward with something that the community hasn't fully seen, we haven't really reviewed. Um, so I'm just gonna, it gives me great pause, and I, I'm just curious if anyone else has that slight discomfort in their stomach when we talk about this pace.
I, I will say, if we're gonna discuss this further, we need to make it an agenda item.
You took the words out of my mouth, Abel. So why do we have a motion to um, add this to the agenda?
Well, uh, Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion that we add the discussion about the uh, bond referendum date to the, to the agenda.
Second.
Motion from uh, Councilwoman Kelso, second uh, from Councilman McEntee. So uh, yeah, discussion can ensue. Um, I would say.
Um, Abel, just, I assume no one opposes that motion?
Oh, yeah. Is there anyone opposed? Alright, so um, so I think, you know, it is, it is rushed. You know, the timeline sort of forces that on the discussion. I, I would say the the thing is that this is just to give us the ability to have the bond language on the referendum when it comes in March. It wouldn't necessarily be locking us into that future, but it would give us that possibility. You can take it from there.
So Susan, what is the date to, from the Secretary of State's office for this to be included on that March uh, proposed referendum date?
Uh, according to their current tentative schedule, the questions would have to be certified to the Secretary of State's office by January 11th. We would have to vote to request the legislators to introduce the enabling legislation. Once they pass it, we would then have to vote to ask the Secretary of State to place it on the ballot and have the canvassing authority certify that question and submit it to the Secretary of State by January 11th.
And that would lock us into having that question on the ballot? What, what is, do you, I mean, do we have a month to pull it back? What, what?
Um, like that, I am not certain.
So I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable. Um.
Because they obviously.
January 11th.
I mean, they, they have deadlines so that they can prepare the ballots themselves and allow the towns and the state.
Now the lead time that they need, so I guess I was.
To do the informational, because the state has to do their informational, and the towns who would be putting a bond question on that ballot as well, would have to have time to do informational to their electors.
So the, the school building committee doesn't even meet again until January 2nd. And from the meetings that I've attended, it sounds like the stage two is 1,200 pages. So I haven't read that. I would guess that many people have yet to read the full document. Maybe Deb might have read chunks because she's on the committee. But this makes me feel very uncomfortable. We, this is the first, this has ever been talked about. And, and Jess, we're getting on a very quick roller coaster, it sounds like. And I feel like we, we, I take this responsibility very seriously. And to do my due diligence in, in, in a three-week time period is, is I think probably a, a, a heavy lift for anybody, let alone new people. So I, I'm uncomfortable with the timeline. I'm uncomfortable with what we've told the community up until this point, and now we are changing drastically. And if you're attending some of the public meetings, there, there's definitely concern with the plan. We won't, we won't even see the plan by the, by the sixth, the, the school building committee hasn't met. So I don't know. I'm new, and I'm trying to learn all that I can and do a very good job for the community. So that, that, that discomfort is real and honest.
I have a few thoughts. Um, I think the question would have to be approved conditional upon Ride approval and conditional upon um, the actual reimbursement that we're seeking, you know, up to 50%. Um, I also think it makes sense that we would have to get an update, Rob, if possible, at the next meeting, if we do a special meeting to vote on this. You know, from the building committee, RGB, Ride, whoever we can get down here to give us a, you know, thorough update as to the current state of the project. I don't think we can move forward without that. But I also think that placing this referendum in March, we're already going to have other referendums on that same date, makes sense because we'll save $10,000 as opposed to doing it in May, because it appears like we're leading to do it in May anyway. So, so that's, that's my take on it. But, you know, obviously, there is some more due diligence. I think we gotta get a presentation. We need to talk about it further as to, you know, what the question on the ballot is gonna be. I think it should be conditional. Uh, you know, upon ride approval and upon reimbursement. But th- those are my thoughts, so.
Rob, you had something?
Yeah, so a, a couple of things. Um, first, it, this does have uh, schedule implications. I mean, if um, it is on, if the local question is on the March 2nd uh, ballot, then you will not know the results of the Ride review. The Ride review begins on the 15th. We're not gonna have an answer from Ride in all likelihood by March 2nd. But Rory's solution to that problem is correct, and it's the way that many municipalities handle their bonding for school projects. They seek the authority to spend before they have an approval from Ride, making it contingent. And if the right approval doesn't come through, the expenditure obviously never arises. In terms of the scheduling for the, the campaigns or, or the, the votes, it is, it's gonna be a crazy March, May, June, if we have three referendums. It is going to be very awkward. It's going to, it's gonna put um, Susan's office back in the same posture that they were in for much of this year, and it was not good. Um, and if we're still in COVID, we could have um, the same sort of challenges that we had uh, this year. I, I really would love to avoid that, that problem. It was not an easy problem. Uh, we survived it um, because we had extraordinarily uh, dedicated and focused folks. I would suggest that they didn't burn out during that period, but boy, they could have. And if we have to do it again, I, I think there, there's a real danger there. We don't commit the town to having the item on the March 2nd agenda or on the March 2nd ballot until the 11th. At the 11th, we do run into, it's, it's the point of no return. Until the 11th, we can always not send to the Secretary of State and say, we've decided we're gonna wait. We're not gonna do this on March 2nd. So we, we can, we can do this a little bit for a while, but we're gonna have to make a decision fairly quickly.
Councilwoman Burger.
All right, thank you. Um, so we've, we've spent over 1.1 million dollars already in the stage two. So I, I, Rory, I just want, $10,000 at this point, we are, I, I had a talk with Rob, and he said it's not uncommon to spend $2 million in this phase. So we've already spent 1.1 million. 10,000 is not, we spent $50,000 on postcards and a marketing campaign. There is, there is significant pushback from the community about the plan. So this will create havoc and uproar in the community because now we have unbeknownst to them, accelerated the whole plan. It, it's, so now it's three weeks. And we're gonna have to do a whole lot of committee meetings and meetings just to advance it to get to make the March, the January 11th. So while I, while I hear the staff concerned about lots of processes, I also feel like $85 million is a historic ask. Uh, we wanna get it right. We wanna do right by our community. And to me, this, this is extreme. So I, I would think that we, had we had this conversation before community comment closed out, I think we, people would have been calling in and speaking about it, because this, this takes it to a new level for me.
So I see a couple of people who wanna speak by raising their hands, but uh, Councilwoman Kelso, you also have had your hand raised for a bit, so.
Yes, so my concern, Rob, is that the town council doesn't even vote whether to advance the stage two application until the 25th of January. So that's my biggest concern here. Um, we can draft the bond language, we can make the conditions, we can do all of those things. But what happens if this council votes not to advance that stage two application? So now we've got a bond, this is post-January 11th now. Now we've got a bond question that is moot. Right? I, I don't know. I think the cart is way before the horse here, and I am not comfortable with this. I think the council needs to. The stage two application is complete. It is, you can read it all. If you wanna read every page of it, anybody who wants to read, they can go to s k s d build.org. It's South Kingstown School Department, build, B U I L D dot org, S K S D. You can read the stage two. Are there some tweaks to come to it? Yes, but, but the, the gist of it, the bulk of it is there to read. That's not my issue. My issue is the town council is not going to vote on to advance the stage two application until January 25th. I am not comfortable voting on a bond referendum prior to that.
So, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Kelso. Uh, Rob, did you want to respond to that question?
Yeah, uh, so I, I, I appreciate it. I mean, I, I think that's, you know, all, all correct um, analyses. What we're, the, the thing though is that the application and the funding mechanism, while related to one another, are in fact on very different tracks. And by moving from a May 2nd or a May 22nd um, vote to a March 2nd vote, you're not changing the application at all. The application is unaffected by the funding. So it, it really is just a question of whether it's more efficient on the funding stream, more efficient to do it 10 or 12 weeks earlier.
And my question, Rob, is if there is no need for the funding stream, right? If this council says, no, we do not want to advance the stage two application.
Yep.
Then there's no need for the funding stream.
That's correct.
Right? But now we have something that's been advanced to the Secretary of State, and perhaps ballots printed at that point with the question of the funding stream on it. That's now a moot point.
Yep.
I can't imagine how that would work.
So you're correct. One of the solutions to that, I'm not suggesting it, but it's, it's gotta be noted, is that one of the ways to deal with that would be to simply accelerate the approval, to accelerate the vote on whether or not to uh, submit. I'm, I'm just laying it out there.
Um, I, I think I'd prefer to see an alternate path for this bond referendum. I, I am really uncomfortable with this January 11th deadline when that's, I'm not uncomfortable with March 2nd. But the deadline of January 11th to advance the question is really problematic for me.
So uh, just a quick thought. I, I feel like um, Rory's suggestion of conditionality would prevent the question from going on, the referendum, you know? It's not gonna have right approval if we don't submit it to Ride for approval uh, now in February. So that would keep it from.
Right, Abel, but we, we don't know that on January 11th, when it goes to the Secretary of State. We won't know that until the end of January, whether we are going to advance the question.
Right, but.
Questions already at the Secretary of State's office being printed on ballots.
I guess the question then is when they start to print the, the ballots.
Right. Well, that was my question. When, when do we have to pull it back until?
I, I will look into that tomorrow.
We will.
That would be good to know for Wednesday. Uh, Councilman Rose, you had your hand raised visibly.
Yeah, I just, I, I, Deb, Kelso, you took the words right out of my mouth with that. I, I agree, and I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with moving this quickly on this.
All right, and Councilwoman Burger.
I also agree. I am vehemently opposed to this rushed timeline. I think we need to do what we promised the community. We need to follow the process that we said, that we said that we were gonna have a spring vote. This is not what we've been communicating to the community. When you're talking about building trust, building transparency, you have to follow through with what we've been saying all along. I, I'm, I, I feel very uncomfortable, and I think that the community, who's not gonna have a chance to even talk to us until January at our first meeting, which is the, i- i- if we don't have a special meeting, they wouldn't even get to talk until January 11th. So they, they're gonna have things to say, because this is, this is not what has been said for the last six to nine months about the process. So I'm opposed to the rushed timeline.
Interesting. Uh, Rob?
Just for the record, so everyone knows, this has never been discussed in part because we only discovered it several days ago. It was just uh, the end of last week that um, the state's intentions became um, clear and were reported to us.
All right, and um, I mean, obviously, we'll have a fuller discussion on Wednesday, and go over some of these details again. Look forward to hearing if the Secretary of State has any uh, information regarding whether we can withdraw a question if we wanted to put it on there or have the ability to. And then I, I do think there would be, you know, say that that question is answered in the affirmative. We could withdraw the question if things don't uh, look like they're gonna get approval here. And we still wanna have the ability, potentially, to have it on the March 2nd referendum. Then uh, the public would have at least two opportunities to comment, because we'd have to have two special sessions in order to make that happen. Hearing the, the progression of things correctly. We have to meet at one point to send the question to the state legislature, and then a second special meeting um, after it gets approved, um, to send it to the Secretary of State. That's two opportunities for public comment. Um, all right, I think for now, we've probably exhausted uh, this topic. Uh, Councilwoman Kelso, your hand is still raised on the Zoom thing. Okay. Um, okay, so thank you for that town manager's report. Lots of good discussion there. Uh, that brings us to item 11, which is appointments. So, we didn't conduct any interviews, uh, this evening. But there are a couple slots there for 11B and C. One, uh, is an open slot, uh, to serve on the School Building Committee. And then, uh, 11C, I have served, um, on the School Budget Subcommittee. I guess we can take these one at a time. Uh, 11B, uh, the resolution appointing, uh, one of us to serve on the School Building Committee, would be to, uh, replace Bryant's spot there.
Abel, you had expressed interest, um, I don't know. I think when I got appointed, is that something you're still...
Uh, yeah, uh, I, I would be willing to do it. I know that those meetings can drag on. Are they happening generally in the evening hours, though, now? So it's...
They are, 6 o'clock on Wednesdays, generally, once a month now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be willing to serve there. I, I do not think I would be able to do both that and the School Budget Subcommittee, so I would, um, you know, look to step down off the Subcommittee if, if, you know, folks chose to put me on the School Building Committee.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make a resolution appointing Abel Collins to serve on the School Building Committee.
I'll second that motion. Right, we have, uh, a motion from Councilwoman Kelso, a second from Councilwoman McEntee. Uh, any discussion here? All right, uh, send me to the lion's den, if you will. Uh, is, we can, uh, call the roll on this?
Council President Collins?
Aye.
Council Vice President McEntee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose?
Aye.
There's a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Uh, and then 11C, uh, I, you know, um, I have not heard from the schools recently about when this next Subcommittee is gonna be meeting. I remember the last time, oh, Rob, you have...
So I actually have had a chance to talk to Linda about the scheduling of meetings recently, and I, I happened to remember she noted that these meetings were going to be moved to the evening. Uh, they've been doing, they had been doing them during the day. They're gonna move them to the evening. But she also indicated that if the council needs to adjust schedules, they will accommodate, uh, any council member who wants to serve.
So Rory, you, um, I know we appointed you last time, and then the meetings were going to be held during the day, and that did not fit with your schedule.
Yep.
So if they're held in the evenings, is that something? Because you obviously have the educational background, uh, that would, amongst us, that would best serve on this committee, I think. Is that something you can, you have the time?
I've talked to Robert Zarnetsky, who's communicated with Linda Savistano, and seems to be that they wanna, you know, work with me around my schedule, assuming I wanna be on it, uh, so that way I can make the meeting. So, yeah, I'm interested.
I, I would also be interested if, if Rory isn't.
All right, so I'd like to make a resolution appointing Rory McEntee to the School Budget Subcommittee.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilwoman Kelso, a second from Councilwoman Rose. Uh, is there any discussion?
I just was kinda curious, when was this discussed, um, or prior?
This was when it was, the Budget Subcommittee was first formed last year. Um, or maybe it was even, yeah, I think it was last year, like December time, same, similar time.
So if I can just interject, Deb, last year, we appointed Rory to the Subcommittee, and then they scheduled the meetings during the day. So we had to, Rory had to, uh, step down from the committee, and Abel was appointed. So that's how I knew Rory was interested in serving. He just didn't fit his schedule last time around.
No, because it, the conver, maybe I misunderstood the conversation now. It sounded like there was some conversation, um, happening already, and I just, I just was curious how they knew to work around Rory's schedule already.
If, if I may, I had spoken to Rory. Rory had indicated that he was frustrated that he couldn't be on the committee. I called Linda and spoke to Linda about whether or not they could accommodate a change.
So, so, does, will Rory come back? I can't remember, Abel, what your role was. Did you come back and report out regularly? Would, are there minutes that you would be sharing, Rory? Like, it's, it's, it's pretty tricky to find. This is a Subcommittee on one of the most important things that happens in the town, that, which, um, it's tricky to find that agenda, or those minutes, or the videos. So, are you gonna come back regularly with that? Because it's definitely something I'm very interested in.
Uh, sure, Deb, if you're seeking out questions about the meetings that are had, that I'm present at, I'm happy to share with you the information that I receive.
Do you, do you, so, so, Rob, do you think that you could, when your manager's report also forwarded a link to the minutes for the Budget Subcommittee, so that all council members? So I don't wanna put the whole burden on you, Rory, but if, if that information could come to us, that we could read it, because the whole point of a councilperson serving is to sort of come back and report out information. So, since it looks like Rory's going to serve in that role, I wanna just make sure that the rest of us ea- easily get the information that we're seeking, as well as, as probably the community, because it is challenging to find both the video and the meeting agendas. So, I guess, I don't know, do I have a motion out there that nominates myself? Are there two motions, Mike? No? Okay.
Yeah, there's just one motion on the floor at the moment. And I, I would say, I think when they were first discussing forming this Subcommittee, there was talk of having two council members on the Subcommittee. Um, I don't know, you know, where they might be in, in that discussion at this point, but I, it, it's worth asking if they'd, um, be willing to create that spot for you.
I, as to your question, um, i- if the motion to appoint Rory fails, then we would go to your motion to appoint you.
Okay.
You have muted.
Yeah, I can withdraw my motion, because, um, I think Rory, obviously, you have a great accounting background and soon-to-be legal background. Um, I would just appreciate if we could have a formalized way of providing that information to the council and the community, so that all who are interested, especially me, easily finds it. Thank you.
Just, um, for a point of clarification there, Deb. Would you want, uh, us to, like, Rob to communicate and seek out a second spot on that Subcommittee for you?
No, no, it's fine. I, 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 I just wanna make sure that we get the regular, most importantly, is regular updates, regular information coming to all of us, whether it comes through Rory or some systematic way that Rob develops, that's great. I just, I don't recall consistently hearing from the Budget Subcommittee last year. Maybe I missed it, so I just wanna, the whole reason that you have someone from the council there, so that the information comes back to the council. I just wanna be assured that there's a process. I, I totally trust Rory to do an excellent job.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's, uh, take the roll for this one as well.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman McEntee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose?
Aye.
That vote is unanimous.
Thank you all.
Abel, quick question. Who's the Chair of the Committee, so I can reach out to them?
Uh, I, I don't know. I think it was Stephanie Cantor, uh, last year.
I don't think they've designated one. They're still organizing, which is why Linda indicated they'd be willing to work around schedules, because they're not up and running yet. Also, the, only the, they only started up last year. So this is really a new committee, or a new Subcommittee for them.
All right, uh, very good. Um, one thing, uh, to talk about in terms of, uh, rules, when we get to that, uh, discussion, is how we make appointments. I mean, we've made our appointments for tonight, but, uh, we recently changed to interviewing for all reappointments and, um, appointments. Do we wanna stick with that? Think on that. Um, we'll be discussing it eventually. All right, uh, with that, uh, we'll go to Item 12, New Business. 12B is a resolution authorizing an award of bid, the Coastal International Trucks of Warwick, uh, for a 2022 international HV607 dump truck with eel dura-class dump body and Viking snowplow, an amount not to exceed $160,838. It's further described in a memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, dated December 7th, 2020, and entitled "Bid Recommendation Six Wheel Dump Truck with Snowplow." We did discuss this a bit in the work session, uh, because we're gonna need an amendment. It's a little bit of a typo there. Um, a- any further information you want us to know on this one, Rob, before we make your motion?
Uh, no, the amount to be amended, though, is 161,395.
Do I hear a motion?
So this is Deb Kelso. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve Item 12B with the amount not to exceed, um, amended to 100, excuse me, $161,395.
Rory McEntee, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second by Councilman McEntee, a discussion. Seeing none, uh, is there anyone opposed to this? Right, that motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 12C, a resolution authorizing an award of purchase to Solzon Corporation of Chelmsford, Mass., for police mobile devices, in an amount not to exceed $66,000, in accordance with GSA 70 Contract Number 47Q2QTCA19D00MM, uh, as described in a memo from the Police Chief to the Town Manager, dated December 8th, 2020.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 12C.
Deb Kelso, second.
A motion from Councilman McEntee, second from Councilwoman Kelso. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well, and that brings us to 12, uh, D. Uh, we shouldn't have taken these ones together. Resolution authorizing an award of purchase to Interaction Insight Corporation, uh, of New York for a police recording system, in an amount not to exceed $20,000, in accordance with GSA Contract Number GS-35F-0415, as described in a memo from the Police Chief to the Town Manager, dated December 8th.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 12D.
We have a second.
I'll second.
I can.
All right, uh, we have a motion from Councilman McEntee, a second from Councilwoman Kelso. Is there any discussion? There anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to Item 12E, resolution authorizing an amendment to an award of contract originally granted on March 9th, 2020, Central Maine Pyrotechnics, uh, for 4th of July fireworks displays, uh, for the years 2020 and 2021 to the years 2021 and 2022, in accordance with all bidding specifications, an amount not to exceed $19,000 per year, and further described in a memo from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager.
Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion to approve Item 12E.
Yes, Rose, I'll second.
A motion from Councilwoman Kelso, and a second from Councilwoman Rose. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed to this motion? That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to 12G, a resolution extending the town's declaration of emergency, adopted at an emergency session on March 15th, 2020, subsequently renewed on April 13th, May 11th, June 8th, July 13th, August 11th, September 14th, October 13th, and November 9th, as shown on Exhibit 1 of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Uh, Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 12G.
Yeah, I heard, heard two motions to approve it. Who wants to make the second?
Yes, Rose, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman McEntee, a second from Councilwoman Rose. Uh, is there any discussion on this? Now, Councilwoman Bergner?
I did ask in the work session, and I just wanted Rob to just re-explain what he shared in the work session about the pros and cons to having this continue, and also to comment about other towns and communities might be in the same, just for the public.
Sure. Happy to do so. Um, so this is the, uh, declaration of emergency. The declaration of emergency allows the administration, uh, particularly through the manager, to take quick action should it become necessary. A good example of where this has become necessary recently is we had, uh, the state of Rhode Island looking for a site to, uh, do COVID testing. They were looking to begin operations within several days, and by executive order, uh, under the emergency declaration, I was able to get them into the Southwood School so that they could begin operations on a Saturday, having only spoken to them for the first time on a Wednesday. Uh, so this is the sort of authority, uh, that, that comes through this executive, I'm sorry, through this declaration of emergency. Um, the declaration is simply the authority to take action. Executive orders are the means by which that action is taken. Uh, in South Kingstown, when I issue an executive order, I come to the council at the next regular meeting to have that, uh, order reviewed and ratified. Uh, at this point, we only have one outstanding executive order that hasn't been superseded by a council resolution or ordinance, and that is actually the one coming up after, uh, after this emergency declaration. The other reason we have emergency, uh, declarations is to make sure that we are eligible for reimbursement, emergency reimbursement, by the state and by the federal government. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, there are no municipalities in Rhode Island that have suspended their declarations of emergency. Um, this is really where everybody in the state is. There may be one or two that aren't there, but I don't know of them. Uh, this is really where the vast majority of municipalities are, uh, giving, um, the administration the ability to act if action is necessary. Uh, and again, in South Kingstown, that's always ratified or reviewed and ratified, or not ratified, uh, by the Town Council at the first opportunity at a regular meeting. Um, and we only have one, which is the, uh, executive order, uh, coming up next.
Good, thank you, Rob. Um, any further discussion on this item? Very good. Uh, in, uh, that case, let's take the roll, Collins.
Council President Collins?
Aye.
Council Vice President McEntee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to 12H, a resolution adopting Executive Order 2020-09, Seventh Amendment, as shown on Exhibit 2 of the agenda.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 12H.
Deb Kelso, I'll second.
A motion by Councilman McEntee, a second from Councilwoman Kelso. A discussion on this one. Or perhaps, uh, Rob, do you just wanna go over the details of, of this executive order?
Yeah, so as I, I just said, um, we have had a number of executive orders. Most of them, um, have sort of been overtaken by events, and therefore have either, uh, been replaced by resolutions adopted by the Town Council. In one case, an ordinance, uh, that came in, into effect, uh, well, two cases. Um, ordinances that have come into effect, uh, by council action, and some of them have simply been let to expire. For example, uh, parking restrictions near the beach. Uh, they were necessary in the summer to control, um, social distancing around the beaches. They're not necessary now, so those have simply been allowed to expire. This one is a travel restriction. It's a travel restrictions and self-quarantine requirements and gathering limitations. It mirrors the governor's gathering limitation. It mirrors the non-resident travel restrictions and the quarantine requirements, and mirrors the short-term lodging restrictions that are in place under a state order. So technically, even if this local order were not put into place, we could enforce the state's order. However, this also carries the $500 fine, which is easier for us to impose than it would be if we were operating under the state's order. This mirrors the state. It really is just a local version of the state executive order. And it's the most basic of all of the, the restriction. It is limitation on gatherings. It is the non-resident travel, and it's the short-term lodging restrictions.
And Council President Collins, if I may, the governor's executive orders have superseded the one that we had indicated when we drafted this order. So in paragraph one and two, where it references the governor's executive order 20-100, that actually should be amended to 105 instead of 100.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Susan. Rory could make a friendly amendment.
I'll make a motion to amend my original motion to include the correct executive order number as it rated by Susan Flynn.
Deb Kelso, second.
Right, we have a motion to amend from Councilman McEntee, and a second from Councilwoman Kelso. Is there any discussion on that proposed amendment? Is there anyone opposed? All right, very good. And that takes us back to the original motion. Any further discussion on this executive order? Is there anyone opposed to this motion? That motion carries unanimously, and that, I believe, brings us right to the end of our agenda. I want to congratulate our new members on making it through the first one. They will not all end this early. I'm giving you fair warning. I know you've been involved long enough to know that. But it was, it was good to, to get us all together in an actual meeting here. I look forward to working with you all. See you all on Wednesday. And everybody watching out there, have a good night. I would ask at this point for a motion to adjourn.
Deb Kelso, motion to adjourn.
Deb Bergner, second.
We have a motion to adjourn from Councilwoman Kelso, a second by Councilwoman Bergner. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. This meeting is over. It is now 8:53 PM. Have a good night, everybody.